Hi, this is the regular monthly meeting of the Dayton Economic Development Committee. This meeting is being recorded for replay on local cable access and on the town YouTube channel. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Now join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the next item for discussion is to discuss review act on adding an associate member to the committee. Some committees in town have this conservation does it. Planning doesn't, I don't know, but I'm not sure who else besides conservation. But basically, it's a non-voting member of the committee. And it's also somebody in the wings if you have an opening, they're familiar, they can step right in and join and become a voting member. So the first question is, are we interested in having associate members?
Absolutely.
Right, so somebody like to make a motion that, and I imagine I have to ask the selectmen to allow us to do it, but whether we just do it or we have to get their permission, but either way, would somebody like to make a motion to allow associate members?
I'll make that.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The second is we have a candidate for an associate member, which is Robert Gere. I don't know if you want to join us up here at the table. You can join us up here, there's plenty of seating. You want to tell us a little about yourself and your business in Dayton?
So I'm a local startup yard care service business here centered in Dayton for the promoting of local Dayton business and probably serving our community. I grew up in a small town, so I understand the values of tradition. I come from a family where my father volunteered for the Lions Club, so I understand what giving back to the community means. And I also grew up on some farmland, grew a little bit of rice in Northern California. So I've dipped my toes in some dirt here and there. But as we did that, that was all through family entrepreneurship. So I got to be exposed to not only the labor side of it, but the actual working side of it, which has then propelled me into where I'm, put myself into a position of starting my own business as of this year. So in that and returning back to Dayton for being away for a year, I thought, what better way to give back than actually being part of the development council committee?
Anybody have any questions? Is it Rob, Robert?
Whatever works, Rob, run.
Then if anybody has any questions for Robbie? No, but somebody like to make a motion that we ask the selectman to appoint him as an associate member to the committee?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, so I'll send a letter to the selectman making that request. Thank you. You're welcome. The next item is, you can stay here.
Okay. I don't like having my back too.
I know.
We have.
Discuss review act on a joint proposal with Open Space Committee to acquire development rights to agricultural land. So this has actually come up a couple of times with the Community Preservation Committee. And I did talk briefly about it with Jonathan Gale, who's on Open Space. But the idea would be that the CPC would buy, well, one, the CPC has some funds, funds available, but they're not so rich that they can go buy land. I mean, they just don't have enough to like buy anything substantial. But you don't have to buy the land, you can buy the development rights to the land. And write the deed in whatever restrictions you want, and the idea would be that by the development rights, write it as the landowner has agricultural use of it. Or maybe they have a house on it of their own personal property, whatever, but it's a commercial farm. And the town actually holds the deed, not the deed to the land, they have the deed to the property rights. They could sell it if they want, you know, they could use it as an asset when they're doing their bonding that, you know, this is part of the town's property. And at that point, it'd come under the control of the land use committee, like, do you want to keep it, do you want to dispose of it? No, but it's ours now. So the question would be, what do people think of the idea in general? And do we want to form like a little working committee with Open Space? To figure out like, what would actually be the logistics? What would it cost? How much could property could you really do? Well, what would be the criterion for who could apply and how would we select a person? There aren't a tremendous number of farms in town, but there are a few. And if you expand it to say not just farming, but animal, horticulture, you know, if you want to expand it. So the first would be just like, what do people think of it in general? And then we can think about like, do we want to work jointly with Open Space to try to put something together? And then bring it to CPC?
I say yes.
Say yes.
It's been, this is like a lot, a big topic amongst the groups that I'm a part of. And MDR has been working on this as well. MDR meaning the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, in case someone else doesn't know that.
Group that we could leverage for support as people through it.
You can use them and Land for Good and American Farm Land Trust as well. They're all worked together. Actually, there was a webinar a couple of weeks ago about doing something like that for municipalities to.
I'm kind of lost here. Where would the land come from?
From the local farmers.
So in other words, if I owned the farm.
A commercial farm and operating farm, yeah.
Right. Then the land use committee would buy the rights.
Development rights.
Development rights.
Yeah. So you can't develop the property because you know you've sold the rights to develop the property.
Correct, correct. So now the land use committee would farm it or?
No, the land use committee, like, the land use committee watches out over all town-owned property.
All town.
Like every piece of parcel that the town owns, that's what the land use committee does. They review it, they, every now and then they make a suggestion on selling it, you know, they meet, I don't think, I think they meet like once a year or so to talk about things, but that's about it. But it would kind of fall under them because it's a deeded piece of property, not dirt. It's rights to a piece of dirt, but still a deeded, deeded asset. So it would kind of like sit with them.
So all that means is that nobody can build on it.
No, because we own the rights to build on it.
They can't develop it.
Right.
But the commercial farmer can still commercially farm that land.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, actually, here's the thing. You can structure the deed, whatever the two parties agree to structure the deed is. And you can say, I mean, in our minds, like to help, one, give an injection of capital into farming, and two, preserve the land. So, but in theory, it's like, you write the deed however you want to write the deed. If the two parties agree to it, it's that simple. That's why I said, maybe you allow them to have, if they live on the property, maybe allow them to have a house, they just can't build more houses. You know, maybe allow them to say like, you can put as many like farm-related outbuildings as you want, that's fine, we don't care about that. You know, but you can't build a small factory or, you know, a duplex or, you know, whatever. Yeah.
Is there much demand for that?
I say yes, it just helps out the farmer with a little more money. I did something similar with some property that's APR, Agricultural Preservation restriction, where the state and the town of Seekonk used their money to, they gave it to, what was my parents', so I can never, ever, ever build on a piece of property.
Which I'm sure you're okay with that. Yeah, no, I mean.
But the other, they, like, it took about two years to get, to go through this whole process. And it's cost us money with surveyors and all this others, lawyers, and it was a big pain in the butt.
But that was in agricultural restrictions.
Yes, so this is better.
That, and agriculture restrictions expire. They have a, they have a term usually.
This is forever.
Depends upon how it's, how it's restructured, but that, because sometimes they're like good for 25 years or something.
This, with this way that state does it, it's, it's forever. And I have to farm it or else.
Yeah, you have to give the money back. Okay.
Oh, really?
Just got something for us to think about too, it's like, we paid you for the development rights and, but we don't want to back out because we want to preserve the land. So I don't know, it's one of those things you'd have to think about, like, as you're in this process.
Managing the property.
Yeah, you don't want them to just cash in on the check that you're giving them and then they leave the commercial piece behind because then we lose the tax revenue and that, right?
Then you've got open land, but it's not being farmed.
Right.
Right, so it's kind of.
I know someone that owns about 400 and some odd acres. And not in this town, but, and he wants to sell the rights to continue with.
Yeah.
As a golf, as, as a golf tournament, a golf course.
Golf course.
Oh, yeah.
And he's having a hard time. They're not, they don't have the money, or enough money to actually buy those records.
Well, 400 acres is a lot, so.
Well, it's only money. But, you know, I thought that was a great thing, so this is very similar to that in a sense, yeah, so. I, I, I think it's a great idea, I really do.
So I think the easiest way is not like have us meeting with Open Space, just have like a working committee of one or two people that are interested in this, I'd love to have you be part of that.
Sure.
And we can open space to designate somebody or two people and they can hash it all out, figure out what's best, come up with a recommendation, bring it back for everybody's agreement, then it could go to CPC and the selectmen and say, what do you think about this sort of proposing? And some point down the road and then. So that said, I don't think we really need a motion to approve this, but we do need to have people who are willing to work on a, like a subgroup with Open Space. And you just said you would be willing to.
Yes.
Is anybody else interested in doing that?
I don't want to.
Provided I get on the committee, it might make sense for me.
He's also quite broken space, so that's why.
I'm going to try and jump back on the team.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I think I did say.
So I'm also interested in doing it, so as far as current members that, from our side. And then I'll reach out to Jonathan Gale and say, you know, he has to believe he's out of the country right now on vacation, so, but when he gets back and we'll say, can we tee up with you and get this going, so, okay.
I think it's a great idea, I just don't want to put myself off on many things because I.
Because you know a lot of people.
I do, unfortunately, well, I shouldn't say unfortunately. A lot of people that I know are really good people, but it's, so I, I've got a lot, my hands on a lot of different things and.
Putting a new house.
Yeah, yeah.
So the next item is discuss review act on giveaway of outdoor advertising to local business. So I'm in the Lions Club. The Lions, if you may or may not know, have signs around town. But they use us fundraisers, so people rent for the month and they charge $250 a month for two locations of double-sided signs. And the ones they have right now are at the corner of Warner, and I guess that's Spring. And then one on Route 138 opposite the tennis courts. They asked the selectmen if they could put up two more and they agreed. So the two new ones are going to be at Forest and Tremont and at Centering Williams. So as it happens, I happen to be the person in the Lions Club that was responsible for finding buyers. Well, I mean, like to rent it for the month. And most people, it's like, they take it, it's May, and they just take it every May, year after year, they want it for May and they want it for June or whatever, so. I had no trouble finding people to take this and I actually held a couple in reserve. Because there were, I wanted to go around like to all the small places in the town, like Haley's Diner, which just opened recently, puddle jumpers, I went to a couple of other small businesses in town, said, you know, we're doing this, I know people want it, but I wanted to try to attract some small businesses and see if you want this opportunity too. And they all said the same thing, which is, I'd love to, I can't afford $250 a month, that's way beyond my budget. You know, and that's just the reality of, you know, I'm running a small business and. So the idea would be, would we, and I'm going to recuse myself for this because I have conflicts, conflicts here, but would we be interested in purchasing a month, or maybe two months, but at least a month from the Lions Club at rate of $250? And then just giving it away by drawing a name out of a hat, basically, of some local business? The only thing they'd be responsible for is the signs that they have me printed up that are certain size and format, so whether like 20 bucks per sign and it's double-sided, so that would be their only cost.
That's it for the.
Yeah, signs, we work with a local sign maker that just does it, you know, at cost, so. But you know, what people think about the idea of like, it cost us 250. If we did it for a month, it cost us 500, if we did it for two months. And there aren't many months available, basically, it's January, September, December are the three available months. And I've got people lined up for them, but I wanted to like try to find a way to offer it to small businesses first. And since they can't afford it, you know, this would be another way of approaching it, so.
I like the idea, but what is the criteria as to who puts their business in the hat?
Well, one, we have a lot of businesses in town that wouldn't benefit from it. I mean, we have got people that make shelving for submarines. They do custom molding for factories with metal parts. Not everybody is going to benefit from a sign on William Street, you know. The ones that would benefit from it are the same ones that have put their names out on the town directory. You know, so I thought if your name's on the town directory, your name goes in the hat. They could refuse, they may say, I thank you very much, I don't really interested, but that would be the pool. And also, if we advertised it and say, this is what we're doing, we might get a few more people that say, I'd like to have my name on the town directory because I'd like to be entered and it actually is a good place, you know, for advertising and that sort of thing. As I speak to Lane Gardens and the Late Anchor, neither of which are on the directory.
I'm on the directory.
You are? Lane Gardens, I don't think so.
I know I filled out something to be on there.
Oh, okay, I'll follow up with you then, sorry.
Like a long time ago.
Okay, maybe I'm mistaken then. All right, so, okay, you'll be in the, unless you don't want to.
Way to get her on now.
But, I mean, we can work out what the criteria would be, that was my idea for a criteria. Do we want to vote to approve a one month, $250?
So basically, we would be taking the money out of our budget.
Our budget and paying the Lions, because they're the ones who are doing this. And the signs would be whatever business we wind up like giving the month to.
Sounds good to me.
I mean, the other thing is, our budget for this year is $900. When we put in that budget, which I'll talk about later, we had this idea in mind that we were going to be hiring a marketing company to help us put together a video. As of last April, we found out, we're going to get that for free, you know. So we had money we were trying to save from last year, we were putting a budget together for this year in anticipation of pooling it and helping with that. And then the DR High School's marketing department came along and said like, we'd love to do that for you at no charge, so. You know, we have available funds, basically, so.
And if we don't use it, we lose it.
Yeah. So somebody wanted, how much, well, I should say one month or two months?
I'm going to say one.
Fine, okay.
Because I don't want to, the businesses that want to be there to have the opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Since, I would just need to know, are we looking at this January, September or next December, it's, the signs are still in the process of being built, so.
You said January?
January of this, of next year, September of next year, or December of next year. I, January would not give us a lot of time to advertise this and let us know. September would be just beyond town meeting and are having to rep, you know, give away the money unless we, you know, encumber it or just pay in advance, so, you know, I don't think it may be September.
When is our fiscal year?
June, June. But if we got an invoice or we just paid it in advance, we could do next September.
Okay.
All right, would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Right, so, yes, thank you, I abstain for reasons of conflict.
So are you going to be putting out a mail to the people directory of this plan?
She better get one.
So yeah, I guess I should do one saying, here's what we're doing with a cutoff date. And saying, if you're not on the directory, but you're interested, so you can participate, please let us know by X date. I mean, it takes me literally five minutes to update the directory once that they give me the information about what they want. So that's not a big deal. What's a, if we're thinking about next September, so we have kind of a long leeway to build up to this, when do you think we should start saying like, we're doing it? You know, here's the cutoff date, blah, blah, blah. We have, we seem to have plenty of time because we, you know, we're talking next September, but still, start advertising it whenever.
How about like June? Can I give somebody three months to come up with their, a quarter or so to come up with
Okay.
some dollars to put that, to pay for their sign and then.
20 bucks, I mean, or 40 actually, because two signs, but.
If they can't afford 20 bucks, better get another business.
And that, so that's, there's going to be four signs, but you get one.
No. Well, actually, I guess we should ask that. The idea is that for $250, you get two locations, double-sided at each location, so it's one, two, three, four signs, actually, it's 80 bucks, I should say.
Okay, that's really cheap.
Unless we wanted to break it up and we offer it to two people, like, this person gets Saturn Williams, this person gets Tremont and Forest, and we.
But some, like, I don't go on Tremont and Forest, I do see the one that's on 138. So then not, not everybody travels in the same town, so.
Having it both places is, okay. So like end of May, beginning of June, we can start letting it known. Starts talking about like, if you're not on this, we're going to give it to somebody on the directory, if you're not on the directory, here's how you get on the directory. And as we get closer to that, we can set a date for actually picking a name. And we have to just allow enough time for them to work with the sign maker, to get the signs made. Not a huge deal, so.
It wouldn't hurt, like, maybe in the new year to mention that.
This is our upcoming plan for the year kind of thing, like, okay.
Be on the lookout, save the date.
Okay, good.
That way it gives enough time for people to put their information into the directory.
Think about what they will put on the sign.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
That too, yeah. If they don't have any graphics and they don't have a layout, then the sign maker is going to have a problem and he's willing to help them, but then you're going to have to start paying him to help you. So, but if you've got a graphic, you've got a format you want to use, then it's just the 20 bucks per sign. The next item I have is discuss review act on support for the upcoming, I have December 1st through 30, it's actually just December 1st, auction of 620 Spring Street Mill Building. So that's been advertised now for like two weeks, week and a half, it started, it popped up on the web. Joe and I have both actually started telling people that we know who at some point in the past said, you know, wouldn't that be cool to on the will? And whether they're interested or not. So the auction is going to be $750,000 minimum bid. Obviously, the building itself is valued by the town, like for tax purposes, is like three and a quarter, the million, but there are issues, you know, there's an outstanding tax bill. There's parts of the property that are on file with the state as being hazardous and there's restrictions on how it can be used. There's some maintenance issue, so. Seven and fifty sounds, sounds cheap until you have to.
Structural issues as well.
Well, I was told, now, I did talk to somebody there who's been there for a long time as an employee through multiple owners. The structural issues are the roof in some areas and rotting windows that have to be replaced. But not like the stonework is collapsing or the bricks are given away, that kind, that's more cosmetic. Now, that, he's not an engineer, so, I mean, new buyer would have to do their due diligence, obviously, and hope. I also talked to and sent an email to the Taunton Chamber of Commerce because they post that stuff. I talked to, I always screw up his last name, Jay Padiakos. He's the Director of Economic Development for Taunton. So he reposted it on his Instagram feed. Our website, www.dightonbusiness.com has a list of properties available, so I posted it there. I personally put it on LinkedIn. I talked to the Office of Economic Development in Boston and they're going to spread the word. And then I called the Realtor and I said, one, in your real estate listing, you have this zone for light industry only. I said, it's not, that's not a true statement, it's zoned industrial and it's zoned industrial overlay. Each of which, either by right or by special permit, give you options about what you can do. And it's a lot more than just light industry, it could be heavy industry, it could handle hazardous material in there, at least it's zoned for it. It could be used for retail with a special permit, it could be sort of licensed, a restaurant with a special permit. And it's a big building, but you could have a lot of different things going on in there.
Building is somewhere around 500 and over 500,000.
550, right?
Yeah, 550, something like that.
552, 552 and 500.
Yeah, 33 acres.
Wow.
Because it goes back towards Gertrude, right?
A lot of chickens in there, you know.
No, mine like to be outside.
You can let them out on the roof.
The hawks would get them.
Oh.
Or the eagles.
So I also let planning board and administrator know, just quickly, planning tends to. So I also let Planning Board and Administrator know, just quickly, planning tends to get. Questions about things like that when things pop up in town, so just be prepared. So, the other thing is, at a meeting, two meetings ago, Paul Reynolds was here. And he was suggesting that the town should adopt what's called Chapter forty-three D. Expedited permitting for hazardous sites. As it turns out, town already adopted that in twenty fifteen. They didn't do anything about it, but they did go to town meeting and it was approved. So what it means is, the town is willing to, first. The things that are designated as hazardous waste sites, the town is willing to step up and say, if you wanna redevelop it. We'll commit to a, um, timeline, I forget what it is, like eight months, nine months. To vote, to give you a yes or no vote across all committees, so Planning, Conservation, Stormwater. Has at most nine months to make a decision. And the applicant can't run out the clock, I mean, that's nine months of our, the town's time, you know? So that's what the town agrees to, but more importantly, once you have that, also. The, the town approved it. The selectmen then have the authority to say, we're gonna apply it to this particular property, like six twenty Spring Street. But the selectmen have to do that, and the selectmen have never designated any property to use this for. And then the state reviews it and agrees, and once you have this designation, one thing it opens up to the owner is. A lot of opportunities for state funds for remediation, rehabilitation of the property that. You know, it's a hazardous site that you're willing to do something with, mitigate, clean up, whatever, will help you. So that's the advantage of doing it. So I spoke to the Selectman's Office about getting on future agenda in November, so prior to this auction. And seeing if the selectmen are willing to designate six twenty Spring Street as a site for. Just forty-three B expedited permitting.
So let me get this, so if the selectmen say yes, then.
It means that.
They don't have to wait the whole nine months.
Well, it means that the town, if somebody comes forward and says, I wanna do this kind of renovation inside the building. The town commits to saying, okay, we'll, across all committees, we're not gonna drag it out more than nine months to give you an answer. Now, we'll have, we can give you an up or no vote based, you know, how valid the proposal is, but it won't take longer than nine months.
That's to clean it up.
No, well, that's to do, that's to get, that's for us to approve it, for the Planning Board to give their approval, Concom to give their approval, Stormwater to give their approval.
I was gonna say, is nine months natural, is that an expedite, was that considered expedited? I mean, cause it, true, right, like if I'm building for a sales, that's.
Sorry.
I live around the block. But.
I'm thinking, so if I wanted to buy that building or whatever, and wanted to. Run some kind of a business, like a recycling business out of it. Is that what you're?
Yeah, and let's say you need to make some renovations to the parking lot or the building, or maybe that's a special permit application, cause. Some of them are supposed to be special permit, then, yeah, we're saying that. The town commits to giving you a yes or no vote, using the normal rules, but a yes and a vote within a cut of, uh, expedited timeframe. I am, I am double checking the nine months, I'm saying that by memory, so.
No, it's not, it's not expediting.
Thinking of one particular thing, I C I, I believe. On the corner of, uh, Main and one thirty-eight. That was I C I.
Yeah.
Uh, there was somebody that wanted to start a business of recycling. Leftover vegetables and things like that from the stores. Where they would come in and just dump this stuff and they would.
Compost it.
Compost it and things like that. And that didn't go anywhere, I think this particular thing would be a really. Good, as we all know, there's a lot of money in that.
Compost.
You know.
Hundred and eighty days, so six, six months, six months, hundred and eighty days.
Long time.
It, it's not, it's not, when it comes to, when you start dealing with engineering and boards and this and that, you know. Attorneys, I can't do it this month, I, you know, I have to do it that next month, it, it's, it's not a lot of time. Took me three years to get a development to go through, and that'll bar. So.
So, to, are people in, it sounds like you are, you have some people in favor of going to the selectmen and asking them to designate six twenty Spring. Under this vision that the town already adopted.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, um, why don't we just take a, a vote on it and, um. Somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, um, so I'll let you know what the date is, I believe it's gonna be the second. Wednesday, which I think is the seventeenth of November, is what the, and the Selectman's Office suggested. So, uh, and then we can decide, you know, who would like to present to them, and who wants to just show up for support and that kind of stuff, so. Okay.
Okay.
Um, but the idea is that if we can do it in November, we can tell the Realtor. By the way, this property has been designated, and tell all your clients this, and maybe somebody who's on the fence will now like. Yeah, maybe I'll bid on it, you know, so, who knows?
Is it possible for, uh, you probably don't know that, for anybody to come in and buy this? Without it going out to auction?
Probably the owners are the ones who are putting it up for auction, so they decide.
The owners are putting it up for?
The new one, well, I should say, the mortgage holder.
Okay.
So, the, so the owner defaulted. The mortgage owners have repossessed, they're forcing an auction. But that's.
Yeah, so that means it's, it's definitely a no-no.
It's a no-no, too.
Yeah, it's, it's gotta go to auction, that's the only way it can.
Now, the mortgage owners are not a bank, they're private. Not that matter.
Doesn't it, or something?
No, it's, I believe the company is called Feeny Brothers.
Oh.
Oh, they're like a big construction company, aren't they?
Yes. They're actually the previous owners, they sold it to the current owner and provided the mortgage for him to buy. To buy it, so.
Is this, this, you. Things can change there.
I mean, if somebody wanted to approach the owner, I mean, the owner tried to sell it flat out, he just couldn't, but he was asking like five million dollars.
Right.
Um. But I have no idea legally if somebody were to approach either Feeny Brothers or the owner and make an option, an offer now to. And they pulled, and they pulled to put the plug on the auction, I, I have no idea if that's possible.
It's not an F D I C situation, so that, that, that's. There was a bank, no way that they could sell it without that, but I honestly think. That this. Way it may actually be possible.
Possible, yeah. I know you know a lot of people, so.
Should I have not said that? No, but I have one particular person that would like to know all of that.
Okay, yeah, pass it along.
Absolutely.
The next item is Discuss For You Act on Town Attendance Requirements for Committee Membership. So, this is just off the, I'm not sure if this is a bylaws or just selectmen rules that have been adopted, but. Any member of an appointed town committee who fails to attend at least sixty percent of the committee's regular meeting. In a six-month period shall be deemed to have vacated the office and may be replaced.
Won't qualify for that one.
Valid exclusions do apply, like absences for valid medical, military, or circumstances beyond the members of the control, subject to review. Additionally, this is, this is the handbook, so this is just something that the selectmen have adopted as a policy. Handbook notes that a member's appointment may be terminated if the member failed to attend three consecutive meetings without explanation. So we do have to, one member who falls into that category, um, I think we were, spoke to her recently and. But Barbara Katavia has not been here since January twenty-seventh, was her last meeting date that she attended. Counting tonight, that would be the sixth one that she's missed. From January to now is obviously more than six months, but we've had several meetings where we canceled because we didn't have quarrels. There were a couple we canceled because we didn't have any business to do, so we canceled in advance. But the question is, uh, whether we wanna go to the selectmen and say, can you please. Um, vacate the seat currently owned by, used by Barbara, um, because she hasn't been here in a while, I do email her on everything. I have not picked up the phone and called her, um, which perhaps I should be doing.
Is, is she getting, like, the email that you're sending him to, or is that?
He, um, I used to be sending it to her personal email back first January, she asked me to change it. And send it to her, a different email, so, cause she said she never checks her personal email. So then I sent it to the new email, and that's the one I've been using ever since. Notwithstanding, we meet the same time every month, without fail, it's just, this is our regular meeting, it's not like it's a. It's ad hoc, and, you know, you only know about it if we call you up and let you know. So, I'm not saying we make a decision tonight. But I just wanted to see what people thought, and if, you know, I can reach out to her, I know you've been in. More recent communication with her and see, she might just say like, yeah, I just, you know, for whatever reason, what's going on, I just. Can't keep up with that, so.
Where do I fall?
You're good.
No, cause I, I don't think I've been to a meeting now, and.
We haven't had a meeting since, uh, July.
Oh, okay, so now I sound.
So I thought this September was both canceled, I think. Uh, no, I think we just both canceled because of no business, actually, but.
Well, I can tell you, if, if I fall into that category, then I'll just send my resignation, then that's the end.
That's all right.
Just send some people.
We don't know people, you gotta stay.
Oh, I won't open my mouth ever again to that.
And I know, just open it up what people think, and what you'd like to.
I know she, Barbara has had some, uh, medical issues throughout the year, um. And my suggestion is you say that you haven't been here for this amount of time, you've missed this many meetings. What would you like to do, because it's a requirement to attend.
Yeah, I think.
Meetings.
I don't know that I actually have her phone number, I'm not sure if you could share that with me, or, okay, I, I just have an email, so. Okay, all right, so I'll do that, can see what she decides she'd like to do, so. Under old business, um. So I did reach out, cause last April is when we talked to D R Marketing Department, it was, um, Patricia Madsen is the instructor, the teacher there. And the plan last April, cause it was so close to graduation, was that we're gonna get started. Knowing that the seniors are gonna graduate soon, but it would be the seniors and the juniors, and then this year. Those juniors would now be seniors, you know, junior class rolling in, and they can bring them up to speed. And, you know, probably like, spring is when they might have something for us. Um, but I just reached out to her, um, a couple of weeks ago and just said, you know. You have even just ideas, you wanna run past us, we'd be glad to meet with the class, which we did, I did at least last April and. Um, Laura's expressed the interest in joining, if we do that again. You know, just, don't wait till you have like a final product to show us, you know, just keep us in the loop and, but it's like, give feedback and edit and that kind of stuff, so. She said, yeah, that's perfect, and, um, so she's gonna give us a call, or let me know when they're in a position to start having something to show us, so. And they're using a bunch of drone videography that we had done a couple of years ago, and. I gave them some suggestions about like what kind of thing we're looking for, but kind of left it up to them to just be creative, so.
That's good.
Yeah. The next item is Discuss, Discuss Review Act on the Revision of the Town Business Guidelines with Suggested New Format. So this came up actually last year, which is, the town has some business guidelines, they were actually written maybe four years ago. They're being maintained, I mean, they're pretty comprehensive, and they give you. All the different things you need to know about the different committees and permitting and. Um, functions of the town, this is all, if you're starting a new business in town, or you have a business and just have questions, so, it's like ninety pages long. So the content is not the question, it's just that, it's just ninety pages of text, and, you know, paragraph, paragraph, paragraph. So, we were trying to think of, how do you make this not so daunting to people? So I happened recently to run across, um, different content, this is about. Energy, whatever, energy utilization, my notes here. Yeah, I think it's about like, people doing, you know, different types of energy management and around. Building codes and, you know, small solar plants for the house and so forth, but I just liked the way it was laid out, you know? I just thought it was just, you know, it's almost like a PowerPoint, it's bullet pointed, it covers the basics. It points you to, you know, more detail elsewhere, and if somebody is like thumbing through our business guide. Uh, it just seemed like this was a more intuitive way of doing it. So I remember that Paul Reynolds was, um, wanted to work on this back then. We just never came up with a good format, you know, that we thought would be an improvement. So, I just wanted to show you this and get some thoughts about like, what you think, and. Not still a lot of material, I mean, but.
Should I think in more of like punch list situation, than just word up like?
Yeah, and maybe like a picture that takes you someplace later in the document for, you know, more detail and. They also do a lot of flow charts, it's like, you know.
Yeah, they send something else in the flow chart.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, I just wanted to get feedback about, whether you think it's worth going down this kind of avenue and see what we can come up with, and.
Absolutely, anything to make it easier for the new guys.
Yeah.
People looking back to it.
Yeah.
I, I just wanna say thank you for what you're doing, because that's, uh. You know, I, I've been on this board for way too long. Really not much has been happening from it. But if it doesn't work this way, the way you're doing it, might as well just. End it, because if it doesn't work now, it's not gonna work any other way. What you're doing is way beyond anything that I've ever been involved in, so.
I know, you've done a lot.
Okay, so I don't think that requires a motion, I just, I'll check with Paul if he wants to like, pick it up again, and we'll see, you know, what we can come up with, and. It'll just be a ongoing process. Although there are a lot, there's a lot changing in terms of the flow, I mean. Planning and conservation are trying to align on how they do things, so.
Yeah.
People aren't stuck in loops, storm waters rewriting their stuff, and they're trying to align with planning, so. People aren't being thrown to storm water and then having to come back and back and forth.
That's, it, that's always been a problem, because you're going here, you're going, no, 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 you gotta go there first, oh, no, you gotta go there. And if we can get this thing organized in a way that you come in, oh.
Be business friendly.
Absolutely, absolutely, there's a lot of people that are, throughout the years, called Dyken. Don't want to go there, you know, and that's it's not good. It's not good. Don't take long to get that reputation.
It takes a long time to lose it though.
Yes.
Lose a reputation like like to get a new better better reputation takes a while.
Yes, yes. But to lose it. From one minute to another.
The next is discuss if you act on a new version of the marketing trifold. So. We had done this a while ago. I hand these out places I go. There's some sitting in town hall. There's some sitting in the planning office. So but I came up with a new slogan.
I think I have.
Yeah, the old one, the new one. So the new slogan. Slogan was discover Dayton. Whatever. It was what it is.
Yeah.
So the new.
Place to do business.
Yeah. So the new slogan is Dayton. Close to everything, far from ordinary. Yeah.
Are you taking marketing classes?
I I work in the marketing department. I don't do marketing, but I sit in the office. And I I'm constantly like asking, what are you thinking now? What would you suggest here? Blah blah blah. So, yeah, I'm benefiting from that. But the idea is just to kind of focus more on the fact that. Yeah, we're not sitting on a highway, but we're not, I mean, we're close to. Twenty four and ninety five, I ninety five, you can get to Boston, the Cape. We're in the center of this whole area. So kind of just. Put it in that perspective. And you know, in the middle of all that, we're kind of just. We're a smaller town. It's easier to deal with. It's more personable. It's more scenic. You got more land. It's cheaper than a city. And just kind of like, you know, close to everybody, but. Small town in the middle of all that mess. So. That was really the biggest rewrite of it. The rest of it is kind of. I might have tweaked a little bit here and there with some suggestions for how to lay it out, but.
The worst part is finding the right. Pieces of land. That will invite invite. Businesses of different types and that stuff.
And and actually Jeff Cavala from the planning board has been. Starting to talk about this too, because he would like the planning board to get involved. But County Street, like from the police station down. At least until you get to more wetlands area, but the rest. But from there like down to like where the library areas. It's like that could really be in theory, all business that, you know, up and down that road. There are a couple of spots where. You know, the river crosses, but you know, there's at least a good half a mile of County Street where there are businesses now. But they're on huge parcels, a ton of land for each business. You know, it looks really unattractive. There's a lot that could be done there. You know, in terms of. If you just have more infill, not every. I mean, I can see the auction house that's there. North Country House needs all that land that they've got. They fill it up.
And then some.
And then some. But on other places, it's just they have a big lot. And a little office with maybe some, you know, some outbuildings and that kind of stuff. They could be leasing that. They could be, you know, there could be other businesses in there and maybe they're missing an opportunity by not like carving it up a little bit and. Because some of those.
I I think they're filling out. They uh, the one that used to be the mill.
Yeah.
They they're filling that that place is.
Is it?
Yes. Filled up, I think. Have different types of business inside there. They just put up that building. They do mechanical work here. And I I think they're spreading that. They could probably put some more in there. But he has that leased. For a hundred years, I think.
Yeah.
Some stipulation there that they put into their lease agreement. So even if they could probably do something else. Or sublease it. I don't even know if that.
Yeah.
That's even in their contract, but. At least that's what one of them told me. So. As far as the others, we have I C I after that. And then the rest of it is all residential. Land, which yeah, we are on the mixed use zoning. But that's ledge there. I don't think anybody is gonna wanna go that route. Up until you get to the church.
Okay.
After the church, it's all single lots going down. So I I don't see. What you're seeing on. From the police station down. You have towers. After that, it's wetlands for a little while. And then it's Chase Ave. There's really nothing. Not much land there.
There's a very good sized lot right there.
Yeah, but that's. I built. As you go around the corner. I built the first house on the right hand side. That lot abuts. Uh, that small section that's there and that's not even. At the time, it wasn't buildable because I tried to see if I could.
Where are you right now?
Across from your property, I think. You on one corner of Chase Ave, right?
Yeah. Oh, the other corner.
The other corner. So she's probably got the biggest lot on that going forward.
Which is six acres.
Yeah, there you go. That's. In that area, I think it's that's a lot. Then right after you, it's it's the river, right?
Yeah, I'm on the river.
Yeah, on the river. Right. After that is the. Auction.
Auction.
Place. Then you got the liquor store. You got the. Whatever that business that's there. He already put in. A place to. Rent space for. R Vs and tractor trailers, whatever may be there. And then it's the mill. And that that's the end of that.
End of that.
It's you know, I'm not.
Where is the mill?
It's just it's tight. Yeah, it's very tight.
I'm sorry?
What what is the mill?
The mill?
Yeah.
Is just before Main Street. There is, it used to be a corner store there. Just before the corner store. You have Main Street there.
Yeah. So that's main. That's county.
This is main here?
Yes.
Okay, so the the corner store is here.
Yes.
And the mill used to be over here. This parcel.
Oh, okay.
This parcel. Now there is a. A metal building that they put over here. And they they use that to fix the vehicles, the trailers or whatever. This area here happens to be. Where I feel maybe empty. But I see a lot of. Things in there like logs and. Things like that. But as far as I know, they leased that. For a hundred years. It's a hundred year lease. So. It's locked in. They can do whatever they want and no. Then I C I, I think that's gonna be. A generation after generation. Things that to clean up that's there is. Not. Gonna end anytime. So. So.
An old factory mill back in the day that.
What they did dies.
Yeah.
On. People used to tell me that they used to see the water running down that thing being red and sometimes blue.
Yeah.
The grandfather works there for a while.
I used to tell them that they must have been eating drinking a lot of Gatorade.
If you have any suggestions about this, I'll put I'll print up some new ones and drop them off at town hall and. I just like the slogan.
Thank you.
Oh, we do have. Six new businesses and towns since our last meeting. This is actually as of September. Fifteen, because usually I ask the town clerk each month to send me some of the send it to me in time for today. So. At least through September fifteenth and since our last meeting. We do have a new owner of what used was Jesse's diner. It's not called Haley's diner. Your company, Air Solutions, H V A C. Uh, which is home based business. Dead toast. I don't know what they do. Another home base.
A what?
Dead toast. Now, is that related to? Like Jerry Garcia and Grateful Dead. I don't know. Dead toast, I think was. Their songs, but I don't know. Anyway, it's a new business in town. Faithful Plumbing and Heating.
Faithful?
Yeah. Positively Perfect Rooming.
Could figure out what they do.
Yeah. And then of course we have a new location or expanded location for Rego Electric, which took over what was the seventeen twelve building. Welcome to town or expanded business in town. So. No new correspondence, no public input. Just because it's been a while, we do have meeting minutes from June twenty third and July twenty eighth, which I sent out. And July twenty eighth looks very repetitious of June twenty third. We have just kind of rehashed a lot of the same stuffs. Would somebody like to make a motion to those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Next, this is set a next meeting date. So.
Can I put ask a question in public input?
Oh, sorry.
I'm working on something with this South Coast Food Policy Council. Called it's called the carrot, which stands for Community and Agriculture Resilience Audit Tool. And I'm doing Dayton in. The reason the what it is is for communities to self assess how they currently utilize the assets of their local food system. To achieve a substantial level of community resilience. So I have a question for this group and you can answer later. Think about it. In our community, community economic development agencies and or organizations. Lead, collaborate, or partner with food system organizations to identify. And support farming and food system businesses, local food supply chains and local food infrastructure.
And the question is, do we do that? I would say this committee historically has not done that. I don't know about the agricultural committee. That's a different committee in town, but.
Yeah, most of these questions are for them, but I just because this is the. Dayton Economic Development.
Yeah, we did talk tonight about starting to do that with development rights purchases, but you know.
Well, didn't we also talk about?
And we do have a dedicated member of this board that represents the agricultural community, community.
Yes.
I think that's our plus.
Um, but we we talked about. A while ago. It was when Serpide was working on that plan of what could be done with like the. What the I can't remember what the princess house place is called. I don't know what that's called.
Okay. The co-op industrial zoning.
It co-op is in there. Yeah. I forget the name of the owner. Yeah.
Bringing in businesses for all of that and. Did wasn't it the second session I was talking about with Vince about like doing commercial kitchens? Or that was another group.
Have brought it up.
Okay.
I remember it being for that site, but you have brought it up. I actually. Was on the got on, I got a contact and I got on the phone with from somebody from North Carolina. One, the company that owns that. Is an international multi, multi, multi billion dollar company. They have their fingers in everything, almost all plastics related and pharmaceutical, but they're huge. They they're North America operations are in. Um, housed out of North Carolina and I got on the. A local contact for somebody who like manages this site remotely. And she fled outside like. We're a plastics company. We don't do development. We have land that our factories are on. We're not interested in doing more than that. We're not interested in developing it. If we ever want to close our factory, we'll probably sell it, but. Thank you, but no, because I was talking about like, what could you do with the property? You could lease it out. You could fit more businesses in there. And she was like very polite, but said, yeah, that's not our thing. We don't do that. You know.
Excuse me.
But. Actually, at first I said, no, we don't do that. But then it occurred to me, what about the whole initiative we did with Paul Reynolds with. Looking to lease land owned by the town for agriculture. Didn't pan out. But that was an initiative we did go down. So I would say actually maybe we do a better job than we. Give ourselves credit for in terms of supporting local agriculture.
Kind of go back to. That part. Town owned land. Could be auctioned off. And but keep the rights to. The develop any of it. I I don't know if that's even legal.
No, it's it's legal.
Well.
Paul Paul's actually on the land use committee. And I said something like that to him once and he's like, yeah, no, you're right. That's an option. For the land use committee to think about. So.
I don't know why they're keeping the pieces that they have.
Why are they keeping it?
Why don't they auction it?
I I think it's more because developments. Cost the town a lot of money. People don't realize.
A lot of this land is some. It's water. And woods.
Some of it's landlocked. It's like it's only accessible.
Some some are, but some are not. There's a parcel I I at the. Top of. Three month street, I would say. If they were to sell that, thing is somewhere around. Three to five hundred feet of frontage. And over a thousand or two thousand feet deep. That could fit a lot of homes into that. And if that got developed. And let's just say that they got. For the sake of fifty homes into that. If each home was to come in with two, three kids. Do we realize the amount of money to educate those kids? So if it got. If we kept the rights to develop. And somebody wanted to buy it, even if it was for little money and we got some. Tax base out of it. I think it would be better than having it there doing absolutely nothing. I my my.
I do. I do have a feeling though, that's a conversation for those land use committee, not necessarily us.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I I was, I developed. I built houses all my life. So at the time, I didn't even pay any attention. I couldn't care less. But now it's kind of selfish of me to be saying things like this, but. This is my town, you know, this is where I've been for the last thirty six years, you know, thirty seven years, whatever it is. So. I. That's one of the reasons why I'm here. This is. Give back a little bit, you know? If that's what I'm doing.
You are.
Sure. I know. Go ahead, say it. You know.
Was that just it? That one question for us or okay?
Thank you.
Are there any upcoming like programs or something related to it that you want to make people aware of or?
Nah, no, CMAP is very busy right now. We've got a lot going on. With. Possible cuts to staff and feeding people. Possible cuts to staff and feeding people. Food systems a little.
Want to get to know a lot of people.
Need to know people with money that wanna buy fruits and vegetables.
That's the tough one.
Thank you.
The next is to set our next meeting date. So I wanted to throw out there. You know, a lot of people have had trouble with, you know, meeting on a regular basis and we've had several times. I mean, we, I think we feel like we do a lot, but we really need to meet every month. So maybe, I think once a quarter is not enough, but once every two months. I don't know what people think about that. It's probably enough to keep us busy and. Now, two months from now is actually. Christmas Eve, you know, that's the fourth Monday of December is Christmas Eve. So what I was thinking was maybe we meet next month, which would be November twenty-fourth. That's the fourth Monday. And then going from there forward, we try and every other month schedule and just see how it works and.
Sounds good.
I'm good with that.
All right. So the next meeting will be on November twenty-fourth, six P M here. Um any other business anybody wants to bring up? And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Come on, Raphael, you have to say something.
I third.
All right. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.